I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming. We'll get to the business as quickly as we can here. Is there a chance of you to go through the minutes?
Yes, I made a motion we approve the minutes for eight twenty-one, twenty-three.
I'll second that. Been moved second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we have payroll on the amount of, the two payrolls, amount of two hundred thirteen thousand four hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. Then the Union Hospital security of four thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars and ten cents.
I'll make a motion that we approve both payrolls, the one the amount two hundred thirteen thousand four hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. And security at four thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars and ten cents.
Now I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. All right. Then we need to acknowledge receipt of payroll claims accounts payroll report in the amount of a hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
Yeah, I made a motion we acknowledge receipt of payroll claims in the amount of a hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. Okay. Today the eighteen.
Yep, yes.
Do we have an out-of-cycle check request?
No, we don't have any. I have some invoices that you need to approve, but they haven't moved them through the system.
Okay, okay. Go ahead and go down that list then. The first one we have is for core facilities. And that would be for the work on, putting together the package we approved before to do the jail repairs on siding. Amount's three thousand something?
Three thousand five hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents.
We just need to approve that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion, I'll stay and you get some.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I'll make a motion we approve the invoice for core facilities for three thousand five hundred and eight dollars and forty cents. And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up being mechanical, building solutions?
It's past due. You just got it, but the invoice is from February of this year.
Can I see that?
You got one.
Yeah, you should have one.
Go through that.
Next one.
All right, oh, it's from the sheriff's office, okay, okay. Six hundred fifteen dollars?
Yep.
I made a motion that we approve the out-of-cycle check to HFI Mechanical Solutions for six hundred fifteen dollars for work on the jail.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Go ahead.
All right, then we have a renewal for the VSP.
You've got a copy of it. It's the same as last year.
Yeah.
And it's good for twenty-four and twenty-five.
Do your whole, so it's pretty good. So it's the vision care insurance. So I'd make a motion we approve the contraption, VSP vision care with the two-year rate hold.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
All right.
Next is holidays for two thousand twenty-four.
You guys get way too many days off.
No, we don't get that.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Well, next year we got the holidays, or I mean the election days that are in there that you don't have this year.
Yes.
Because this year there's no elections, but you got the primary day on Tuesday, then you got the general election in November.
Yep. And Columbus Day are going to be...
It's on the day that the Cother Bridge Festival is going on, so we don't have to swap that.
Right. It's the day after we're worried about.
And I had already gone through and worked at the holidays myself, and they're the exact same as these, so...
Okay. Is there anything of concern?
No, I don't.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I made a motion we approve the holidays as presented by the order.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
All right.
Okay. All right, then we have a renewal for the VSP.
You've got a copy of it. It's the same as last year.
Yeah.
And it's good for twenty-four and twenty-five.
Do your whole, so it's pretty good. So it's the vision care insurance. So I'd make a motion we approve the contraption, VSP vision care with the two-year rate hold.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
All right.
Next is holidays for two thousand twenty-four.
You guys get way too many days off.
No, we don't get that.
Okay. All right.
Well, next year we got the holidays, or I mean the election days that are in there that you don't have this year.
Yes.
Because this year there's no elections, but you got the primary day on Tuesday, then you got the general election in November.
Yep. And Columbus Day are going to be...
It's on the day that the Cother Bridge Festival is going on, so we don't have to swap that.
Right. It's the day after we're worried about.
And I had already gone through and worked at the holidays myself, and they're the exact same as these, so...
Okay. Is there anything of concern?
No, I don't.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I made a motion we approve the holidays as presented by the order.
And I'll second that.
I might make a note that we always go with the state holidays for our listings we match up, so moving second to approve the holiday schedule as presented, all in favor say aye. Yep. All right. Under old business, we had the Union Hospital agreement, and as far as I know, we've not got anything new. Nick, have you heard anything from them on...
I have not.
That expires in September. And I've been in conversation with our deputy several times about, and I was asking, he was going to get some stuff from the guy he knew that works with for Minna County and how, how they handle that, but...
I thought it was September twenty-first they didn't expire.
Okay. I just haven't changed my mind on it. I don't know how we can take on that responsibility of that potential problem. I mean, if we have a deputy make a bad decision and get sued, we're on the hook for that. And in that light of that possibility, I mean, that's a serious...
Yes, it is.
Serious thing to me. Even the lady that was here from Union kind of accepted it's just not a matter of if, but a matter of when some kind of thing's coming up, because those situations is more and more violent in the hospitals all the time. If he takes down someone harder than he needed to, or some jury decides harder than he needed to. What do you think, Jason? I mean, I don't want to take anything away from anybody, but sort of I knows what's happening is basically we have deputies that have been hired by Union Hospital to, to do their security work. But one of the stipulations that their attorney requires them to hold is that any decision or anything that, lawsuit that would occur out of the actions of that deputy that is on his own time, not working for the county, on his own time, and working for the Union Hospital, if there is ever a lawsuit or damages, that Park County is responsible for that because he's a Park County deputy, even though he's not working in a Park County deputy capacity at the time he does those things.
Well, I don't think they're going to change their stance...
I don't either.
On anything, but it'd be no different than me going to Terre Haute, make a traffic stop or intervening. I mean, even if you did nothing, which is most frivolous lawsuits, then you're still getting named in that lawsuit.
Right.
The only thing, difference is you're, the officer benefit by making money over there out of county.
Right. And that's what, that's the, that's the difficult part for me. He's their employee at that time, so why aren't they taking that responsibility for hiring that person to be doing that work? It's really a tough call. I mean, I don't have a, a good answer on this. On the one hand...
If they're confident enough in him to put him on the payroll, they should be confident enough in him to screw cover.
Because really they're hiring him and we're, we're responsible for whatever he may do on that job, which is insane.
Yeah, I think they do it definitely at Terre Haute, Union Hospital and Regional, but apparently Clinton didn't want to do that this way. Or does that work?
So we just need to... Have you talked to them recently or...
Have not.
Would you mind making contact again, tell them this where we are, we're down to a few days here.
Yeah.
That contract's not expiring and...
Yeah, this week.
I can't speak for these guys, but for me, mine...
I don't want to put the county's neck on the line.
I don't, I don't see how we do that.
Didn't strike me as an invasionable point. I think Jason's right, but I will reach out to their attorney again, just see if he wants to talk to me.
Okay. Man, he takes off opportunities away from somebody. It's not like our guys are overpaid. But he must see the possibility of that being a problem, or they wouldn't be afraid to take it on themselves. Okay, we'll give him a chance to see it, but it's about over. Today's the eighteenth, right?
Yep, that's what said this week is, if she's right, the twenty-first.
It's the twenty-first.
You might let us know if you hear anything next day or two before the twenty-first, we can convene an executive session if we have to and...
Yeah, we have no problem coming in if they'll make some kind of agreement, so they're not going to have to count the line, but we have no problem with the deputy doing security work on their days off, more power to them, but I don't want us to be on the hook for...
I have never heard a situation where I'm going to hire your guy, so you're a painting company, you've got this guy who is a painter, and you've got insurance on whatever work he does, so I'm going to hire him on his own time to come do mine, but even though I'm not paying you for his services, I'm just paying him directly, but you're going to be responsible for any damage he may do. I don't, I don't know any company that would go along with that idea. Okay, well, we'll see if we hear anything from Nick then.
I just sent that email, so...
Okay.
He's usually pretty good about responding.
Randy's not here yet.
He's not going to be, he didn't say... Yeah, you might, oh, yeah, that's Julie.
Julie's not going to be here, but she's standing over in four, so you guys should work in.
Jason, I guess you're up then, sir.
Okay. Today our jail count is sixty-four. That's fifty-two county inmates, nine DOC, and we have three out of county holds as of today. Reported collections year-to-date, seventy-one thousand six hundred and eight dollars and fifty-one cents. An inmate billing year-to-date is one hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars. That's all the numbers I have.
Anything from us? Are you fully staffed?
Uh, yeah, well, we're hiring deputies, so...
Got some candidates?
Got some good candidates. I think that raise helped us.
Good.
We do have an ordinance to on the closure of Rhodes and Bridgeton. I don't know exactly how you want to do this, do you? Kevin Kelly is here.
Yeah, we're going to get...
And I think we should at least let him...
Oh, sure.
Speak his voice before we...
Yeah, I wasn't going to do this, and we didn't hear from him, so...
All right, we'll continue on then.
Yeah, if we're ready, Jason here, are you Kelly?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on, you sit over here, we can hear you, okay? As long as we can get you on the camera here, so people can see who we're talking to. So what, what are you thinking?
Well, I understand needing to close the road, but we spent the last year building a new parking lot downtown, basically, one block east of the main drag. And now we're basically shut off unless we run the cars in there with signs and everything, through all residential property on the south side of town. And for safety reasons, that don't make sense to me. Our parking lot will hold three-inch cars.
Well, I understand it, and you tell me if I'm wrong on this, that if anybody coming from the south would have access to your parking lot, because they won't know about it.
They'd drive through town.
But they wouldn't know about it.
Residential labor is...
Yeah, but they wouldn't have known about it otherwise anyway.
No, but all the way would have to do is put a sign up there on the main drag.
Right.
You could see it from the main drag.
Right.
Now we've got the signs out.
I just had a conversation with John Swan, he was a reporter for, I think Channel Ten, I think, for years, still is maybe, and, and he always parks in Joe Hawkins' head for, for years and years. And I'm the one who told him, he said years ago about how to get around Bridgeton, go around town and come in the other side to get to the spot. And I said, yeah, I remember having that conversation. And he asked about, could he like to go back and support Joe as he has for all these years over by the fire department? I said, well, you'll have to come in from the east to do that. And he said, that's not a problem for him, because typically they would go to Mansfield too, so he would just come in from that direction. I said, basically, the way I understand it now is anybody, anybody can get to any parking lot that they know is there. You may have to drive around the town, but it's about a two-mile drive you get around town to get to anywhere, any other side of town you want to get. There's going to be some confusion first year, no doubt about that, because people won't know coming in, they can't drive all the way to town to get to... If you're used to parking in Joe's and you're coming from the north, you're not going to be able to drive, you're going to have to go up around and come in the other side. So it's going to be confusion the first year, there's no doubt on that, but there would be, no matter what you do, there's going to be that confusion. I wish it was a straight-blocked city where you could just move over a block and drive down that main street to wherever you wanted to go, but you know it's not, the streets aren't like that in that, that old place.
I think that could be accomplished if a snow fence was built over there by Hawkins' parking lot and just have two crosswalks. And then people could still drive down that road and get around town.
Okay, you're saying that you don't, you think we shouldn't take cars through residential, huh? What direction would you go not to take them through residential?
Well, you'd have to leave your southern barricade up to George Street.
That don't work, because you're going through, past nine occupied houses going up Bridgeton Road, you're going past eight going Crook Street. So you're still going through residential. There's nine houses that's occupied on Main Street.
The only thing is down here is old, you know, Map Street. You've got to run everything across straight here and then down, down through town and across to the parking lot entrance that we'd have to construct.
When you come in Bridgeton Road, Webster Street is open, Cali Street is open.
Yeah, Cali would be, probably be the avenue we'd send them around.
Either one of them they turned on and come over to Crook Street. You go straight north on Crook Street, it goes straight into your parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay, you pass eight occupied houses, sir.
Yeah, but then we've got to spend another five thousand dollars to build an entrance off of that street. We've already put over seventy thousand dollars in this parking lot, and then this happens.
Yeah, and the timing is tough, I understand that. I, I, I understand the difficulty on that.
But if we're doing that, why can't we, like I said, just put a snow fence down here up that one street, move that barricade past to the firehouse and let cars go through there, and then you can drive around Bridgeton.
I think when you do that, when you put that snow fence up, you've got all these vendors all the way down Hawkins Road on both sides facing the road.
You know, like, you still have crosswalk, you still have your officer there at that barricade. People could cross right there, people could turn and go south, and they could go around the whole thing, or you just make a crosswalk on that one route. The only ones coming are people from the parking lot.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, you've been down there lots of times. Would you say Hawkins' wrong is just as heavily foot traffic as Bridgeton Road, if not worse?
From the fire, yeah, I mean, the old entrance we had clear to where Sterling Street goes up, it's, it's heavily traveled. I mean, once you get from the old entrance up to the new entrance, it's not as much, because that's parking lot area, but where the vendors all start, that's all still, I mean, on a given day, it's...
And my whole problem is anywhere, there, there's a vendor along Allen Street here, I've seen him totally packed out in the road, standing, waiting in line to get food and what have you. I don't see getting cars. And this is where I actually set up, right there, I put the X right at the north end of Sterling Street, right there on Dave Gilstrap, at Hawkins Road. And for me to walk from there to here, it's elbow to elbow. Allen Street, we always kept an ice truck over there, and we done away with it, because you can't even get there with the side by side hardly, because it's wall to wall people.
Or is Kevin talking about putting this out of the...
He's talking about trying to snow fence this off and bringing all the people in from the east to their parking.
Ah, I catch you.
But if you put a snow fence up, you would make people have to cross it, a crosswalk.
You would, but everywhere there's, everywhere there's snow fence and no crosswalk, you've got vendors, it's going to... That's not going to have any business, because you've got snow fence.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
And you're not only hurting the vendors, you're also hurting the property owners that rented to all that.
Yeah, we're a property owner too, that's getting hurt, we're getting hurt bad.
I fully understand what you're saying.
There's got to be a way to...
I think after this first year, and, and I hate to tie you to, so don't get me wrong in that...
You know, I understand you may have to make some changes, why don't we move that southern barricade up to George Street and make the change next year if we have to, move it back south. What's wrong with that?
I, I totally disagree with that, because all the foot traffic through here...
There's not that many vendors south of George Street. And I bet you don't have fifteen vendors south of there until you get down to the school, when you've already got, you've already got the barricade north of the school.
Well, you guys know better than I, I mean, that's where, that's where the parking lot is, right?
Yes, sir. Right here.
You know, we got five acres there, luckily this year we only get half of it.
So barricade down square...
Right here.
Here's the light band, we usually Sunday.
Between there and here, are there vendors, are there vendors here?
Very few.
School lot, whole lot is full, that's why we decided to put the barricade here, so any of the foot traffic can walk all the way into all these vendors that's full here to school. We left it open here, so, you know, there's a couple vendors, but they're actually in the parking lot of the school here, but there's probably twenty.
What they, what they need to do to get to this place would be come over here and then up here?
Or my road, I live on school road, and it's constant traffic in Bridgeton.
And that would come...
And so is Bridgeton.
Can they come up from here?
That's where most of them turn, right there, and they cut over and try to find a place to park.
Can they go up here?
Oh, yeah. And team right into it. And that's what we're stuck in, that's why I said that you guys need to, that's really needs to be here.
So the sign, if you had a sign marking here that your parking lot, here where they got the barricade, all they have to do is come down over here to Crook Street now, correct?
Yep.
Same thing as here.
And I own all this property here, if you put a sign right there with an arrow right at my gate pointing parking that way, it would pick up everybody on school road.
That seems more comfortable to me, but, but again, who knows what's going to happen? I do know that this time we're going to, I already talked to the people about doing the private exit, they come from the south, they're going to come from the east direction, because we don't want to, we don't want to attack anybody.
Ninety percent of them come from the whole...
Yes, they do, yes, they do.
We're getting, we're getting...
And they're going to, they're going to need to do it, and there is a way around, getting around if they have to, but they won't know this year to do that one, so it may be a year before they know they get to do it.
And all of that.
Yeah.
And that's why I said, I just don't think it's safe running all them cars behind them streets.
Oh, yeah.
It'd be a lot more safe to use the main road this year because of the change. And then next year if you had to change it, move it south. It's, it's just not safe, because these are narrow streets, this is narrow, you can't pass two cars very easily.
Yes, it's where it's narrow. Certain is, certain is...
I drove that street today to check it, this one down here, you're talking about.
I have to, I measure, we just have a black top.
Two pickups can't cross there with mirrors.
Certain Street you can't pass at all. If we put snow fence up here and try to bring in traffic from the east, there's no passing at all.
Make it one way.
Well, it's make it one way your way or one way the other, guys.
It don't matter, it does the same thing.
We discussed that, and it's, to me...
We'll go to Hawkins and build a road around the back of that parking lot, where you can go both ways off of that street. That costs ten grand probably with the rock.
Ideally would be here, now, because you've got to buy property to do it.
No, not if they give you an easement.
Well, they've already given easement for fire department, ambulance, emergency services to go through the parking lot, they've had it for a while, but general public is, I just don't see it happening.
Nobody's ever had it. You know, they paid almost two thousand a year for that five acres in town in taxes. That's the reason for the parking lot to help pay that.
Yeah, I understand that. Well, I wish we'd be able to see it, I wish we had a better answer. It seems to me simple enough, if you had signs for your parking lot, because we may do parking lot anyway, people aren't going to know about you anyway. Better things from over here and up, straight up to it, that that would work.
One thing I do know for a fact, without a doubt, that parking lot that you have is closest to anywhere in town.
I think they're going to want to...
It's going to end up the best part of it.
I think it will last, that's what I'm saying.
It is.
And you move it up barricade, because this year, move us out next year, they know it's there then. You know, we put out a law...
But I think, but I think they'll find it anyway, even if they have to park down here, every place else and walk, they're going to see that, and they're going to think that's where I ought to be, instead of parking way the heck up here or way the heck over here. And they'll find a way there, and all they have to know then is how to get to the south, to come in down to here, how to get from there to here to come in, in that direction to it.
That only still, unless you had to do something, because if not, then... Well, eventually they's going to step in.
They are, they are.
If they step in, they'll find a way to pay for it, can't you wait to pay for it?
No, they would just tell us it's going to have to be that way, yeah. They got on road on us all the time, but this house going to be at your cost. I mean, we can think of that, but it's getting closer now, I'm, I'm reluctant to change.
Well, nothing is set in stone, yeah.
Oh, I understand.
I mean, all you've got to do is mark the barricade up there, and that'll make us happy for the year.
Well, I understand that, but they've had people working on this for a long time, it's been a long, long process.
Well, they never asked, one time, I think they asked for public input, they never had a meeting about it.
I thought you had at least a couple meetings, meetings down there.
We have one public.
One public, and I think there should have been a few more advertising. You know, it's just not right to just drop it this close to the end. We've been working on this for a year.
Yeah.
Well, that fifteen thousand dollars is a rock delivered today.
Well, I'm reluctant to go against the recommendation of the committee, as I was going to say, because I wasn't part of it, I, I don't know how, how the thought process...
Who's the committee, Dan and...
Dan and several of them down there, several of them down there that did that.
Different local businesses down there.
Sheriff's Department involved with it.
Sheriff.
So it had just been a couple guys that got together and tried to do it. I think they worked at it.
Yeah, I think it could have been advertised, got a little more public input too. It's just not right.
We will run the...
Put yourself in our position.
Oh, I understand, yep, I understand.
I just ask you move one barricade.
I definitely do not.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I wouldn't do that.
More traffic, that's fourteen foot wide.
Yeah, I said, no, are there enough vendors here that to cause a problem to go to, to that street first?
You measured that road, you asked, oh, how wide was it?
Certain Street I think is fifteen, Crooks I think's eighteen.
Our driving lane and the parking lot are eighteen.
Yep.
And we'll, we'll widen George Street on from the main road back to the parking lot to make it safe.
Without Randy, when I've talked to Randy, I think that is legally considered. It's only twelve foot wide, you've got landowners on both sides, and you've got vendors, what that looks like is an alley here and here.
Okay.
You come out from the street, like the same about this church, you know, this church here. You've got vendors that sit all the way up here, that sell antiques facing that, you've got Jack So's property here, you've got twelve foot wide over there. I don't see them coming in there at all. That's the only way I can see it. And as, as far as houses, people that live there, there's more here than there is here.
Yeah, but they've all got booths that are up to front yard, and they're prepared for it. Them other people live on private side street, they're going to be really disturbed.
That's why I decided, close it there, there's none here.
And that part makes sense, I mean, I understand, I understand that. I'm just wondering how many, how suggested it is for walkers here, if they're out in the street anywhere, or if there's sidewalks down there?
No, there is none.
Yes, see, that's a big problem, there's just no sidewalks, people just walk in.
That, that, the street's pretty wide when you're on Sterling Street on side.
There's one there by, that's this church.
And the minister trailer?
What's up?
That's why I decided closer here, there's none here.
And and that part makes sense, I mean, I understand, I understand that. I'm just wondering how many, how suggested it is for walkers here? If they're out in the street anywhere or if there's sidewalks, are there sidewalks down there?
No, there is none.
Yes, see, that's a big problem, there's just no sidewalks, people just walk in.
That person, the street pretty wide when George Street on side.
There's one there by uh short, that's this church right there.
Head in the Minister trailer.
What's that?
Bridgestone Road and south of George Street there, it's pretty wide in front of the Christian Church and everything there where there people run through, two-way traffic.
Oh, I don't, I don't really know. Don't know. I don't see a reason for it because you've got vendors all the way over there on this side, it's totally full. Nothing, well, right, right here at first vendor set here. Here, there's none up the Methodist Church, there's none.
Just the whole idea is just to get them away from.
Right here is full vendors on an L shape.
The whole idea is just to get them away from the vendors and by going on up to to George Street or even up to Bowman Street.
Make make George Street one way or make an exit out of the back on the parking lot to where they have to go out south. Make Bridgestone from your barricade.
I refuse to, it's twelve foot wide.
Yeah, I understand that.
Old Bay wide in George Street.
You thought Bruce you've been involved in it?
Beat this and beat this.
We have.
Yeah, we have.
And I hate it that was a.
I said this at the last meeting. You know, it it. We started talking about this and and at the request of even before, you know, Jason. Safety, and that's what this is all about, you know?
It is.
Yeah, I I understand vendors are going to be heard and I understand that it's late in the game and 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 all that kind of stuff, but it still comes back to safety, okay? And and if 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 you're okay and if you can live with somebody plowing down through there and killing fifteen people. And you say, boy, that's 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 okay, I can live that because I got my money. So be it, okay, so be it.
They'll show up for nine o'clock.
But that's that's okay, but we still need to do everything we can do for the safety of the people who are coming to the Cover Bridge Festival.
You got a better chance of somebody going gun crazy down there and you do a car on their road.
That's but that's what this was all about, was safety from day one, this is what we were talking about, was safety for the people who were gonna be there. And was it gonna affect vendors, was it going to affect property owners, yes, we knew that.
Well, I think it's been a long process.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not like it happened yesterday.
And 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 your parking lot's a new thing to come up, I understand that too.
If this would have been more public, these these decisions, then we could have been told a meeting and maybe something else could have been worked out rather than dumping this all up one time at the end. You know, it's just not right to do it that way.
So you have parking for three hundred cars?
Yep.
I can't see you not having it, there's that many goes past my house.
I'm hoping it changes two, three times a day, so there are nine hundred cars going down that road.
It it's a constant stream of cars past my house.
I just have to think you're gonna be okay even with even with it being this way and with the safety being achieved that we're trying to achieve, I still think your parking lot's gonna be full anyway. I think anybody come to see that you're right in the middle of town, they're gonna go there the next time anyway, even if they they come there one day, but we know a lot of people come to Bridgeton more than one time during the festival anyway. And certainly in the next year. All I can say is in my opinion, I'm just one vote in my opinion, I think everything that they, this committee, this group has put out is is like Bruce said, for the safety. And if I thought that was gonna keep make you empty and not get parkers, but I don't think that's the case, I think you're gonna be full anyway, I think they're they're gonna find where you are. And it's not the first day when they walk by and say, well, there's a lot right there, we could have parked there, that's where they'll be next time.
I just don't think it's right to run all the cars through their residential libraries like it. If I don't, if I lived down there, I was here.
But they're gonna go one way or the other anyway. And that's always a tough call, I mean, that is probably true, we get that, we get that concern on other issues as well, some of us ask you to road for a detour, they don't like all that traffic, like in Mecca, when we had to send traffic to Mecca for a year. They didn't like that, but it's a public road and that's just what that's what it is. My inclination would be to go with what they've proposed, what they planned and and I I just don't think that's gonna impact you much, but if it does, I'm just wrong and I hate that.
Where are you going?
But I think.
You gonna make up to everyone going with all of them?
No, but we don't know what that would be, I mean, it's brand new parking lots, we don't know, we just don't know, I can't imagine not being full anyway. We will do road counts because right now, unless you drive around town, right now, if you come from the east, you're gonna park in Hawkins, if you come from the north, you're gonna park on the north side, come to the south, you're gonna park your spot and the other spot down by the by the school. If people don't wanna do that, like John Swan, if he wants to go to Hawkins because he's gone there for ten or fifteen years, he's gonna know how to get around next year, he's gonna come in from a different direction so we can go park where he wants to park, and I think you'll see the same thing, same thing here. It's not like it's a big metropolis that they gotta drive fifteen miles around to get to the other side of town, it's just a two mile trip around there, and I think they'll make that okay. I couldn't in my mind justify exactly what Bruce says, justify even one kid or one old lady getting hit by a car that didn't need to be in there because we tried to make sure that that we had exactly the right best way to go this time. We know it's gonna have to be tweaked, it's gonna have to be adjusted, and I guess you just gotta start somewhere and see.
That's what I'm asking you, start with the barricade.
Yeah, I know, yeah. But I think though we're sacrificing some of that safety we're talking about to do that by running all of that street all the way to George because you're gonna buy vendors and people on the street shopping. So I guess I'm I'm inclined to stay with what we what we agreed on and try and see, and and I'm I'm sorry they impact you. And I've talked to Chris many times about different issues, I hate seeing them impacted by that, but I think after, certainly after this year, you won't be impacted at all, and I don't think you will be this year, maybe you won't get the people you would have got if they came in from a different direction, but I still think your lot's gonna be full.
Yes.
I can't imagine your lot in the middle of town not being full.
Yeah, we can give them, right?
Yeah, and and they will, I think you do need to sign down there at Kelly Street, run over to how to get there, I think you need to put signs there and and make sure whoever lives there lets you do that kind of thing, but.
And there's a county right away, the sign, you know, on it.
As long as there's room for it, typically the roads go all the way to the county county right away, so whatever whatever you need, and we certainly wouldn't stand in the way of doing, I mean, the signs all over the place are during spring festivals, so.
I guess we paint the street. Put arrows on the street.
I don't think they'd that'd be much good probably. So you see any change coming up?
I don't.
You, Bruce? All right. Appreciate you coming in and I appreciate your concern, I I I do understand that. I think I think we'll see that it wasn't impactful to you and I think you'll get them anyway. Wish there was an easier way to do it, but sometimes you get situations, you can't make both sides happy on stuff and you just gotta go with what you think's right, and I just think that's probably the right thing to do.
Yeah, I just think it's small because they could have had some more public input in.
I understand. I appreciate you coming in.
Okay, go ahead, give me your.
Thanks. Okay, um. So Jason gave his report, Stephanie Dow.
Here for the opioid funds and that's fund twelve thirty seven, the opioid restricted.
How much does that fund have been in now, I know we just got checks.
Oh, I'm I'm not sure, I haven't requested, I had heard that another amount had been sent out.
The state messed up, the state sent checks to the small towns around and now they're having to get that money back, it's not much, but they they sent checks to each of the little towns when they should have come to the.
Got one check back from the town.
You got one back, okay, so they got some some back from Rosedale, so the state sent those out and the state noticed by us, oh, we we sent them to the wrong people, so they've had to request them back and that request will be sent to the county, so we don't really know what's in it unless you know about what's in that money.
Remember.
Okay.
Yeah, once I, because I had heard another uh. Money went out, another um. Back to money. Yes, thank you.
Distribution?
Yes, distribution. Um, but I had not requested an updated budget report, so probably at the next meeting I can have that information.
Okay.
But I have two applications that I've received, the L C C met last month or the beginning of this month and the L C C did approve this application. It is for um the drug court probation prosecutor's office, the representatives from Hamilton Center that work closely with drug court and probation. And our individual in our recovery community that really helps out with drug court and probation. To go to, it's called the Rise Conference and it's in May of twenty twenty four, but they're starting to make arrangements.
Where is it?
It is in California, I believe. And at the con, they're requesting twenty six thousand five hundred and this is for eleven individuals to go. And this also includes supplies and expenses and travel for all of them and lodging.
So that's about two thousand dollars apiece for the eleven eleven that are going and about this is just over two thousand apiece. This is what you do and you've been through these trainings before, do you think the trainings are worth two thousand dollars apiece to send eleven people to California?
I have not been to the Rise Conference, they do, I know probation and drug court has tried to go to stay up to date on different treatment, different methods. Um, the information that's out there with technology and things like that and it is one of the best conferences on treatment, addiction, mental health and justice reform. And I believe they are anticipating maybe the judge to go as well, because this, they'll be um. It'll include judges, prosecutors, defense counsel, probation and parole, law enforcement, case managers, treatment providers, county and state officials, veterans and veteran service organizations.
Jason and Nick, you guys think training like that is worthwhile for you guys?
It sounds beneficial.
Is that the one that was in Nashville last year?
I believe so.
I think historically they tend to go to and it changes locations every year is my understanding, a lot of those national conferences do that.
Are the trainings ever worthwhile, you think?
So my old job, I used to go to things like that and that's like throughout the country, that's where the keynote speakers are probably the best that you're gonna.
I only ask because we've both we've all been to commissioner conferences and there wasn't much vague to them as far as.
The the national conferences, a lot of times, if you pick the right speakers, you can get good people.
So I guess Stephanie, L C C, I know that your board approved it, so that's that's some speaking, but you were supportive of it?
Yes, I believe that it's beneficial for drug court and.
And what's that total amount, twenty six what?
Twenty six thousand five hundred.
Okay, and you said you had two?
Yes, and the other one is for the North Central Park School Corporation. The um, the L C C has not reviewed this application yet, um, but I wanted to, um, once L C C approves it. That we would already have the additional appropriation in place, I'm I'm confident that the L C C will approve it, it's in the amount of eight thousand dollars. And this is for an evidence-based prevention programs that will use the um. Their, the name of the evidence-based program is called Wiggle Wiggle Worm and it's something that the kids can do. That they will attend a group, up to forty students each week. And the students will be identified to attend by teachers and administrators of the N C P School Corporation. And this will, Cheryl McDaniel will be responsible for implementing the program. And they're going to partner with a baby young health provider who will send trained staff to cover the group. Up to ten students will attend each group or up to forty students each week. And so this is, I believe, where um. Hamilton Center might come in and work with these students that are identified probably by Cheryl McDaniel.
Just so everybody understands, these aren't general fund tax dollars, these are money's generated from an opioid settlement between the pharmaceutical companies and the law enforcement, the money's money's impacting them to try to help solve the opioid problem? So those aren't general tax, property tax, income tax dollars, these are settlements from the pharmaceutical companies paying into it.
That's what the conference money was to.
Yes, yes, yeah, so I I don't have a problem with either of those, do you guys have any issues with those?
No.
Uh, I I'd make two motions then, first I'd make a motion to approve the twenty six thousand five hundred dollars for the national conference attendees to go to that conference in California. And then my second one would be, I would approve the eight thousand dollar for the training to be done in in schools contingent upon the L C C approving that application.
And I'll second that.
I'm gonna move a second to approve those two motions, all in favor, say aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Stephanie, I'll leave a letter for the additional appropriations for the council member.
So a letter requesting the additional.
Yeah, and I got I got something else here too myself, so we have a couple more things we need to cover here, guys, before we're done with our regular setup. My phone likes to hide these things from me when I when I put them, I think so, I always have them identified or something. I think I'll remember, anyway, we have the uh. An ordinance we have to approve on the Bridgestone temporary closing of the streets during the Cover Bridge Festival, that would be ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh nine.
Is this the same there same meeting?
Yes, that's included on the on the file sheet then, yeah. So our motion for the approval.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty twenty three oh nine, and I'll second that.
Move a second to approve ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh nine, the temporary closing of the Rose and Bridston during uh Cover Bridge Festival, same DC meeting, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
opposed? None, okay.
I don't even go read it, I just don't read my own, I want to say what it was all.
A gopher, it's actually a good, Nick's the one that drew it up, you wanna.
I can read it if you want.
Know what it's tied to and what the fines are and.
Sure, it just says whereas to ensure public safety during the Park County Cover Bridge Festival, there is a need for additional automobile traffic regulations and street closures to control traffic on the county roads and streets in and around the unincorporated town of Bridston, Indiana. And whereas the Park County Board of Commissioners is responsible for the upkeep, legal regulation and maintenance of county roads and streets within and around the unincorporated towns of Park County, Indiana. And whereas the Park County Board of Commissioners has determined that public safety and welfare is benefited from the placement of traffic regulations on county road and street closures in the unincorporated town of Bridston, Indiana during the Park County, Indiana Cover Bridge Festival each year. And whereas the Park County Board of Commissioners has determined that the proposed county road and street closures do not unreasonably interfere with the flow of traffic on the county road system as alternate routes are available. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Park County, Indiana, that upon passage of the ordinance and publication thereof, the Park County Highway Department and Park County Sheriff's Department shall take all actions necessary to close the following streets during the Park County, Indiana Cover Bridge Festival on an annual basis from nine AM to five PM on each day of the festival. Bridgestone Road shall be closed beginning at the north side of Bridgestone Bridge and continuing until the intersection with Kelly Street. Hawkins Road shall be closed from the entrance of the Hawkins parking lot and continuing until the intersection with Bridgestone Road. Searing Street shall be closed from Don Payne's residence, eighty three fifty one Searing Street, north to Hawkins Road. All side streets between Searing Street and or Kirk Street and Bridgestone Road shall be closed, including all alleys, including those across the street from George Street. All side streets shall remain closed for the entirety of the festival, so it's not a nine to five, the side streets are closed entirety of the festival. Volunteer Way shall be one-way street in a western direction only. That failure to abide by traffic regulations is given by I C nine dash twenty one dash one, which is incorporated herein by reference as the punishment for failure to abide by. which is incorporated herein by reference as the punishment for failure to abide by road closure signs or one-way traffic signs placed in accordance with this ordinance. In event that violation is not specifically governed by the Indiana Code, said offense shall be punished as a Class C infraction. Those infractions, it doesn't say in the ordinance, but they have fines up to five hundred dollars per occurrence. This ordinance shall not apply to emergency personnel or authorized permit passholders.
Okay.
And where are the passes available?
The people that live at Park West of Main Street that have to go to and from work, the Rosedale Post Office will receive passes to get the truck in to drop the mail and pick the mail up. Those, uh, there will be any individual that, like, you being a landowner, you can take a golf cart beside, beside. There'll be room between the barricades to get back and forth, and you'll be able to walk between them. But what I'm getting at, there'll be vehicles. The vehicle or traffic will be those of the length of the homeowners and stuff that have to get out, kinda like they do at Newport. Anybody that it affects has to go to and from work will have passes.
And if during this, uh, if you would, just take note of, if you see things that we can do better next year, that can make it better next year, we're all gonna have to look at that and see that. It's gonna have to be tweaked, and it's not gonna be perfect, nothing is. But we'll have more meetings next year, and, and if we can make it better, our whole intent is to make it as safe and as better as we can. So if you got ideas?
I have a part of that ordinance that's good anyway, so I don't have any changes to it.
Doesn't have to be, but it could be. Could change anything.
We could change.
We could do a new ordinance anytime.
Looks like we need to do something to make things work better.
So if you point out something that, that's just, that wasn't good, and you were like, you're right, that, that didn't work, then we just need to fix.
It was just set up that way so they didn't have to pass the ordinance every year. They can change it and amend it and add things or take things out, but, but that way it's permanent.
Or do away with it, period. It's all, just because it says that now doesn't mean it's locked in stone. That's just for now.
Okay. All right, I was just curious, how it.
Yep, I understand. I understand. Thanks for coming. All right, um, the only other things I had was the sheriff pay for time and a half. We need to discuss that real quickly. Would you, uh?
Yeah, so you guys.
Want to hold on?
Did you guys vote?
Oh, no, we haven't voted yet. It's moving second, though, right?
Yeah.
You made a motion, Dan seconded it. All favors say aye?
Aye. Now we need to sign. I'll make, I'll be the judge outside.
I, I don't, but.
Yeah.
You got any copy of this you need?
Uh, I, I don't need any, as long as she emails me one when it's all settled down.
I need to.
She needs it.
Put it in the paper, and when it's in the paper, then I'll email it to you.
Right. You want a copy, Jessica, and Pam, quick it? You got one?
I got one right here.
Got two there?
There's one.
Here, you, her one too.
I don't have a copy, so. This was my.
That one, I think you need to sign.
Tell the question.
Yeah. I don't know what's talking to her. She's, uh, she's.
I think they originated before Jason.
This side, the west side is totally slow.
If it works well, I'll take credit.
I guess the road's old.
Yeah, what, four years still?
Only would they be going through.
Bad thing is it's tricky here regardless.
Well, hopefully, exactly what Bruce said.
It's just a matter of what.
I think you'll have a better.
He'll be four.
Well, there's been people, it's just, it could be a lot worse. I mean, I've been going down there since two thousand. Nine, exactly. I think you'll find it full.
Especially the ones who get there and they see it this year, they're gonna go and make sure.
Forget five.
Really, you're ending up the best parking lot in Bridge.
Okay, does anybody else have anything to bring before us today? Nope. Your motion adjourned?
Make a motion with your.
So I could, uh, oh, are you addressing the time and a half thing that Jason was asking?
Oh, I thought I was starting to do that when I got the fight back. I had this right, I knew that Bruce had a call in, though, to, to wage people. Maybe we should wait for that.
Yeah, but the problem is, well, that's not a problem. If you look at what Roy's proposing, he wants to start October one. We don't need again until October, I mean, all day it is.
I don't know.
Um, and so, you know, if, you know, the way, kinda the way I look at it is, if the attorneys, Nick, I think, has talked, Bob Clutter, who is the attorney for the council, has reviewed it and given their opinion. I think as long as we have the attorney's opinions, that the base pay does include longevity, and we do what Roy suggested, and that's to change the personnel policy so that all employees get treated the same, then I think we can go ahead, and if, if, I've made a call to Division, Wage and Hour, Division of Department of Labor, because they're the enforcement agency for this. If they come, happen to come back and tell us longevity, for example, is not, should not be included in the base pay for overtime purposes, we may have to have the guys pay some money back, uh, because the calculation was, or.
Or just withhold it and go.
Yeah, or something to that effect, but I, I think just to move forward with this, uh, I think the two attorneys, Nick and Bob, I, I think we can rely upon.
Were you included on that email from Roy?
I was. Um, what I was relying on is there was a policy statement sent out from the Fair Labor Standards Act that had a similar situation to ours. It wasn't exactly word for word on ours, but they gave a policy opinion on it. Um, I didn't see anything specifically from the state of Indiana, but this was the federal Fair Labor Standards Act that they were looking at.
Just so you'll know what Roy included, Jason, if you didn't get that, it says that the effective October first, the overtime rate for deputies and for Susan Chu to understand that, to get that to her, all county, all county employees or salary should be calculated based on their base salary plus longevity, plus applicable premium pay, plus applicable stipends. So as long as all employees, we're getting overtime, their base pay, their longevity, their premium pay, and any stipends they get has to be included. Now, my question is, for what time period? The previous year? Because you, you don't, you don't know what they're, if you're talking in January, February, you don't know what they might have with the rest of the year. So you can't calculate that overtime. Overtime's gonna be changed, or is it just whatever they've accumulated to this point, you buy by the hours they've worked?
It's whatever their active rate would be.
Okay, okay.
So if, if, for example, if longevity comes in July first, and I don't really, it doesn't matter, but let's just say it comes in July one, their overtime for January through June would be based on their old wage. And then longevity comes in July one, so their base pay changes, so then the overtime calculation changes, yeah.
So you got that? How that works? Do you need anything from us?
Well, all that I ask is can we make sure that it doesn't hit in the middle of a pay cycle to where I have to pay them a certain amount this.
Yeah, I don't, I'm just, by what Roy said, October one, I have no idea.
And that's gonna hit right in the middle of the pay.
What a pay cycle is, so.
It's fourteen days, and I'm trying to go from memory.
How do we need to state that in, in motion, Nick, so it doesn't interfere, it doesn't hit mid pay scale?
Cause one of our pay cycles coming up is from nine twenty-five to ten nine roughly.
So we should make it after ten nine?
Can we do it starting ten ten?
Yes.
This is.
I see no reason we can't do that. Do you, Nick, see any reason we can't do that?
Do you have a problem with that, Jason? Just to make it a little bit easier?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I can't think of anything off the top of my head that would be a problem, but I'm just reading what he said.
October first was just a date that, that Roy threw out there, because he wants everybody to get, get on, get what they ought to be getting, which we all want everybody to begin with, they ought to be getting. He also states in his, uh, opinion here that, uh, there was no, nothing done incorrectly, so there's no back pay, uh, due anybody. We're gonna establish a new basis for overtime, making sure all these things going forward are included in the, in the overtime calculations.
Yeah, he only chose October first for adequate amount of time. It didn't have any reporting purposes.
So it was just his regular.
Yeah, so as long as there's not any internal reporting purposes for that, I don't see why that would be good. We could pick whatever date we want.
I would say we go with what makes life simple for them.
October tenth would, would take care of that problem. But I think we're, I think we're doing great to get the problem fixed finally anyway, so if they work another half, half a pay period on the old pay, then, then that's just the way it is. We're fixing it, but we can't go back and make it all okay. Because people weren't knowing what their rate was going forward. They agreed to work, knowing that's what the pay was. Even though they felt it should've been different, these things should've been included, they weren't, and they agreed to do that work. So I think the cleanest cut is, and I'll make that motion, that we go with these recommendations to include in their base, I'm sorry, in their overtime calculation, we will use, be calculated based on their base salary, plus longevity, plus applicable premium pay, plus applicable stipends, and this would begin October tenth. I'd like to add in the motion, uh, amend that, Pam, if you're listening to it, amend this. Uh, my motion says that this would begin, uh, the new process would begin with the new pay period beginning on October tenth. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
All favors say aye? Okay.
And just, Jason, on stipends, those are all those things that the guys get for, the gals get for, like, attending the academy. They get a thousand dollars stipend.
A different.
And they get a thousand dollars for being an ILVA instructor.
Yes.
Uh, field training officer.
Yeah, K nine.
Uh, they get a thousand dollars. A K nine officer gets a thousand dollars stipend if they're one of the K nine guys, the gals. And then anybody who's a member of the FBI or DEA, DEA Task Force gets a thousand. So those are the stipends that Roy mentioned.
Roy and I, I don't know if you need to know this, but we recently talked about expanding those to, to maybe add some more, so.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
I don't know if you have to specify that in the ordinance, but.
Not in that one, we just did. That's just the status of overtime pay at all, that's fine.
But, and then, like I said, I think one of the things we need to make sure to address your issue from a couple months ago, that all employees be treated equally, that we just need to get the handbook corrected, or not corrected, but amended, to state that any county employee who receives longevity stipends are.
Premium pay.
Premium pay.
All the things.
Treated the same way that the deputies would be treated. That way she has.
And that's how I'll be, I'll be getting paid the same way, so I'm glad we're fixing it. It's been a long, long road getting there, but I think we're fixing it, so it's good. Okay.
I got one more thing. Not the first meeting in October, the second meeting in October is October the sixteenth.
Correct.
Where the courthouse is closed on October the sixteenth.
Okay, okay, anytime it's closed, we go the next.
Go to the sixth.
Okay, well, in our, the memo that was passed around, it's, that your meeting is on October the sixteenth, and the courthouse is closed.
Yeah, no, it'd be.
For Columbus Day.
Any holiday, it goes, goes the next, that Tuesday, yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure we've voted on the adjournment, but, uh, it's been moved secondly adjourned. All favors say aye? Okay, we adjourned.